Okay, we'll start the zoning board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In Mass. General Watch, Chapter 38, Section 20F. This meeting is being recorded. The first order of business is 14 Miracle Lane, a continuation of a continuation of a continuation of a hearing on an application of Derek Pacico for a special permit to convert an existing structure into a one-level detached one-bedroom accessory apartment not greater than 884 square feet, as allowed by zoning by law Article 9, Section 952. Subject is located at 15 Miracle Lane, Westport, Mass., shown on Accessus Map 33, Lot 2B. And again, just to remind everybody, the way we're going to do this is we'll start off with the petitioner and whatever information the petitioner wants to provide. The board will then ask questions of the petitioner. Once the board is completed, then I'll open it up to the general public.
Who's voting?
Excuse me? Oh, and voting on this will be Jerry Cuttino, Barbara Ponellillo, myself, Roger Menard, Konstenski, and Ray Elias. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
Keep being honest.
We had the Board of Health at the house, and actually this afternoon, where they approved their opening to decommission the bedroom final. So as of...
Do you have something from the Board of Health that says you have an approved septic system?
They have not provided me with anything.
Okay, that's...
I actually didn't even know anyone was coming into the house until 3:30 this afternoon.
Okay, I mean, we advised you last... This is the fourth, I believe. We started this in July, and this is now November. It is November, right?
Yes, it is.
We advised you last month that there will be no further continuations, and in order for this to... I mean, we can go through the process of looking at...
Mr. Menard, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Good, no.
It's just, coming from someone who does no dealings with any of this, I've never had to apply for a permit of any kind, and I've tried on numerous occasions to contact the Board of Health and ask them for guidance and waiting for a reply from someone. They never called me. The one time they did call me back, I was not even in the country, and I was not able to take that phone call, which was last month. Now, even now, last Monday, last week, we... I had spoken with Matt, and he said, "Okay, this is what you do." I said, "Okay, we're gonna do it." I did it, removing the doors from the bedroom door and the closets, and I said, "Okay." He's like, "Make sure you have someone to block the hinges and everything." I says, "Yeah." Because of the ranch-style end of the hallway layout for the bedroom stores, there's no... I was not able to open it up anymore. So he's like, "Okay." So I called him, and I said, "Okay, I've done that." The following day, Joe Reese came to the house, took pictures, and he told me, he's like, "Well, I don't know. Matt's gonna have to look at the pictures." I says, "That's fine. If someone can just let me know what is going on, if he approves or not, and what steps I need to go further." And he said, "Okay, someone will be in touch with you." And that is when I contacted you, Maria, on Wednesday of last week, on the email. And you said, "Oh, let me contact Matt and find out what is going on." So I didn't even know what Matt had decided until I had emailed you on that Wednesday, which was last week.
That was prior to the pictures. The pictures were just taken this week.
Correct, correct.
And wasn't there email exchange yesterday to about, "Should I or shouldn't I tear my house apart?" So you just did this.
Yes, correct. And Matt said, "You're gonna have to remove the whole thing." Now, with Matt said that he was...
Before we get into a live discussion about what everybody said, that doesn't really make any difference.
We're not the Board of Health.
We're not the Board of Health. We're the zoning board. You started this petition on June 16th. We held a meeting in July, and in July, we told you that the zoning by law requires you to have an approved septic system in order to have an accessory apartment.
Which we do...
No, no, no.
The Title V.
You need to have an approved septic system. We need to have a piece of paper from the Health, the Board of Health, that says that in order to put an accessory apartment in, their septic system, whatever it is, however it is, is sufficient for the house and the accessory apartment. Now, that's been since July. We told you that in July. So this is now four months later, and still, there's some progress on it, but there's no resolution. So today, we have to now, because this is our fourth or fifth meeting on this, you either need to, A, withdraw without prejudice, which allows you more time now. If you withdraw without prejudice, you can reapply tomorrow and start all over again, in which case you will have now a... When you have the letter from the Health Department saying that you have an approved septic system, then you can repetition again, and we can hold a meeting, you know, at the next, whatever. That's one option.
Okay.
The other option is, we continue with the hearing, and we take a vote. Now, right now, you're invited. You would need a variance, because you are not meeting... Am I wrong in this, or not, Jerry?
No, no, correct.
We do not have something from the Board of Health, as per the regulation, that says we need something that says you have an approved septic system. You don't have that. That requires us to believe that a variance is required, which you didn't even request, because you didn't think that... And normal cases, you wouldn't need it if you had an approved septic system. So our two options are...
Even though we already had the Title V inspection done, they have the report, and everything is done there.
Right, and it said it was only...
Three bedrooms.
They didn't know how many bedrooms you had.
They knew we had three bedrooms. They were there. They did the inspection.
No, they knew you had four.
No.
You have one in the poolhouse.
That's the way it was listed in the thing.
There's gonna be four total.
There was no... It's not even enclosed. There's no... It's just an access room.
But anyway, like, regardless of... You do not have a letter from the Health Department that says you have an approved septic system for your house and your proposed accessory apartment. Correct or not?
No, I don't have it.
Right, okay. That's all we... That's... I mean, discussion of...
It's very confusing when Matt, dealing with Matt. Matt knows what we're trying to do.
You've been doing this since July.
Okay, but like I said, we've never had... I've never had to, and not knowing the ins and outs. If I was at the Board of Health there, and we were speaking, and we spoke with them on Monday, and they knew exactly what we're trying to do, and they're not even forthcoming and saying, "Oh, you're gonna need this also?" I mean, for the us common folk who don't... I mean, I don't... I've never had to deal with this, and so...
We told you in July, you needed an approved septic system. We told you that very plain.
Okay, and I'm thinking it's a Title V, and they have that report.
Well, okay, so anyway, I'm gonna get back to where I said. Two options. You either withdraw without prejudice...
That's my only option at this point.
Or we vote on it now, and if it gets rejected, it's a two-year wait before you can reapply. So you either... So, you know, that's...
We'll withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
Please.
So you want to give a piece of paper and... I mean, I hate to put you through this, but this was something that was just approved this past year, because we've had a lot of people who have put in accessory apartments and ended up not with appropriate septic systems. So requiring it to be approved ahead of time just makes the process simpler when you go to the building permit, because Ralph is gonna need it to do anything anyway. So what you need to say, "I..." Put your name down. "Request to withdraw my petition for an accessory apartment without prejudice." That's all he needs to say, right? Yeah. Date it and sign it, and then we'll vote on it. I really do hate to put you through this, but we really need to say, septic systems are a very important aspect of the accessory apartment.
I understand. I understand that. I mean, we clean our septic every two to three years. That's a given.
But making sure that it is capable of the accessory apartment...
And that's why we did the Title V first, because of being over 20 years. We wanted to make sure it was in working condition. So... It's very frustrating when we don't know the terminology, and trying to have someone just to guide you, and they totally just not even return your phone call, or let you know what's in the loop. Okay, all you had to do was let me know. Okay, it's not approved. You need to go further. We could have done all that over the weekend instead of waiting until last night to do all that. So that's my only concern, is not keeping people up to speed.
There are... And I know, last time, we were on the phone talking because of medical issues, and that's fine. I don't want you to be spinning your wheels again the next time. So I want you to understand what all the other requirements are. I know, we talked about it on the phone, but talk...
And I have the copy at home.
You have the copy at home?
Yes, I do.
Good, okay. I mean, the ones that really, I guess, are the most, I wouldn't say most important, but the ones that usually cause the most grief is, A, you have to live, and you are, living in either the house or the thing. We will generally require a deed restriction that says you will live in it, and it will only be one bedroom.
Correct.
So that is something that we would... And other things like that there is sufficient parking for not only the house, but for the accessory apartment as well.
It's a 2.4 acre area.
Anyway, you have those A through J requirements, and I want to make sure that... Because if you... When you do reply, you know, hopefully, we can go through this a whole lot quicker, having been through this once. Once you have an approved septic, if you understand all the other requirements, then this next process should be very straightforward. Meet the square footage. You're gonna live there. It's only gonna be one bedroom. It's only gonna be less than two people. It's gonna, you know...
There's no other modifications to it. I mean, we have a solar system on the roof itself, so it's not gonna go anywhere. As for the building itself, it's all brick, so you would have to be crazy, or someone put a bulldozer through it in order to demolition it. That's not gonna come down, so...
Well, I mean, the things that have... In the past, that we've had difficulty with, is there any way that you could convert that into two bedrooms? Because that's one of the things that really...
No, at this... No.
You know, and we, you know, I guess, you know, we... Generally, we would go by and take a look at the property, make sure, "Oh, yeah, that's what it's gonna be," because it's there now.
Yes. It has been there since 11, 2011.
Or convert the decommissioned bedroom back into a bedroom.
That's the key issue with this situation. There's more of the bedrooms in the house.
Yes.
And we...
Well, I believe, though, that your structure was a lot larger than... You're only taking a part of the structure, correct, for the accessory apartment?
The poolhouse. That's correct.
Yes.
So, I mean, there's...
We're actually not doing any modifications to itself. We're just gonna finish closing the wall for the bedroom. That's it, yes. That's it.
Right.
But I'm saying, the Board of Health's issue is primarily the bedrooms in the house.
Right.
Then you add the one bedroom to the poolhouse.
Right, yes.
You're out of the ballgame.
Yeah, or you either make a bigger septic system, or you decommission one, and the Health Department has to...
And it has been decommissioned.
Well, likewise. So, can you... You want to just... Anyway, like I said, I just want to make this easier for the next time. Like I said, you could petition again tomorrow. I mean, it's... There's no time limit on a withdraw without prejudice.
But don't repetition tomorrow, because you still don't have it.
At least you have everything in hand.
Maybe next week, okay.
And also, I'd recommend to have a complete package, so even though you submitted the plans before about the accessory...
No, we'll probably consult with someone, because this is a little too much for us to even make sure that everything is in...
Right, I mean, we didn't know what the setbacks were for that, you know, what the structure is, where it sits on the property, those kind of things.
In your emails, you said that Ralph and the contractor, Mr. Hebert, that... I'm actually friendly with him, because he does a lot of work at least, and I called him about that.
We know. He lives right on the...
Because I said, "Hey, this is gonna come up tonight." And I said, "I'd like to know that this is up and up," just to make sure, because we've had a lot of discussions about this. And he did say to me that he was in contact with your husband.
Right, and he had asked...
He had told him exactly what he needed to do.
Right.
And he would, if needed, that he would come and do the job for him. I did hear that from Mr. Hebert, and he's the constructing owner.
Yes, Mr. Hebert actually built the back building.
Yeah, he did tell me. He said, "Yeah, I put that building up 20 years ago."
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you read your request?
I, Derek Pacico, wish to request to withdraw my petition for the attached apartment.
We better say, "Withdraw without prejudice." If you don't say "without prejudice," then there is a two-year... You have to wait two years to reapply.
Okay.
So you need to be very specific. Just write up another one.
Okay.
While she's doing that, you want to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll move that we approve the request for a continuing, for a withdrawal without prejudice. Did we have to close the hearing? No?
No.
What do you say?
Did we have to close the hearing?
No, we don't close the hearing because of the drawing.
Close it, no.
Close it. If you close the hearing, then you choose out of luck.
Right.
Right, that's a motion.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. No, as the record shows, unanimous.
Do you want me to put...
Give it to Maria. You signed it, right?
Do you want me to put my name also? I'll put Derek's name.
All right, no, yeah. You sign it, put your name, and sign it.
Sure.
Can you make sure that looks all right, and then stamp it? Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll see you again.
Hopefully. No, just someone else will be talking.
Okay, second order of business is Zero Wildberry Way, application of Jay Reposa, applicant and Reposa Properties LLC owner, for a special permit to construct a one-level detached one-bedroom accessory apartment not greater than 784 square feet, as allowed by zoning by law Article 9, Section 953. Subject is property located at Zero Wildberry Way, Westport, Mass., shown on Accessus Map 1, Map 35, Lot 20L. And again, the voting members will be Jerry Cuttino, Barbara Ponellillo, myself, Roger Menard, Konstenski, and Ray Elias. And again, same process. We'll allow the petitioner to provide what information is pertinent. The board will ask questions after the vote is finished, then I'll open it up to the public. So, go ahead.
Good evening. Matt Pike, South Coast Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Jay Reposa and Reposa Properties, and the property at Zero Wildberry Way. So the property, like I said, is owned by Reposa Properties, and the apartment will be occupied by Jay's son. The site plan is approved by the Board of Health, and right now, the main house is being constructed. The size of the floor, size of the apartment, is 750 square feet, and is the same exact design that was recently approved for La Solemsen, One La's Way. And the project meets the requirements of 9.5.2, and thus is being presented for approval to the board.
Okay, before you go into... I'm just gonna read a letter from Ralph Souza that prompted this. "After review of the submitted building permit application to construct a 784-square-foot detached accessory apartment on the site, as per zoning by law Article 952, detached accessory apartment, the zoning board of appeals may issue a special permit authorizing insulation and use of detached accessory apartment in a detached structure on a lot containing a single-family dwelling providing the following conditions are met. See attached. Therefore, the submitted building permit application is denied," which is what's supposed to happen. Any application for an accessory apartment requires a special permit. So that's what prompted this permit. So, go ahead. You are...
Turn it over to the board. That's all I have to present.
That's all you... Well, you are, again, the...
I'm Matt Pike. I'm the engineer of South Coast Engineering.
Okay. Are you going to be able to speak for the petitioner in regards to all the conditions of the application?
I guess we can try, and then if I can't, we can ask to continue till the next time.
Because we're gonna... I mean, there are... And I know Maria sent you the package of all the A through J requirements for...
Sure, yeah, we meet all those requirements. I have the bylaw. I don't have the... I don't have a letter, but I have the bylaw with me, so I can answer those questions.
Okay. Do you... So let's go through them one at a time, and then see where we stand as far as where you're allocated this. Okay, so A through J. There we go. "It shall be a complete, separate housing unit containing a kitchen, living room, kitchen, living room, bathroom, and a maximum one bedroom. Only one accessory apartment may be created within a single dwelling or house lot."
Correct.
Yes. Well, yeah, why don't you read these? You have to, right? Why don't you read these off and explain to us how you...
So, single-family dwelling providing... So it's a single... It is a one-bedroom accessory apartment, as shown on the approved plan by the Board of Health. So, B, a complete, separate housekeeping unit with a kitchen, living room, bathroom, has one bedroom. It's detached, will only be occupied by one person, Mr. Reposa.
He said his son.
His son, who's also Mr. Reposa's.
Oh, yeah.
So it does... I know you read 784. I mean, my CAD drawing is 764 outside dimension, so the actual livable floor area is 750 or less.
Actually, there are...
The gross floor area.
Gross square foot now is allowed up to 900 square.
Oh, sure, okay. So I meant 764 outside dimension, inside, so it meets that.
We do inside anyway, yes.
Sure. There's more than enough off-street parking to meet Section 8.3.
And so, exactly, more than enough is how many?
I mean, there's at least four spots in front of the accessory, and then it's a big horseshoe driveway for the main house. I mean, you could probably fit another six cars plus, so it meets that. The height and setback requirements meets that. It's been approved. The septic system must meet the requirements. It's been approved by the Board of Health. Any property that has been granted special permit shall not be further divided by zoning.
Well, do you have a written approval from the Board of Health that the septic system that you are putting in is...
Five-bedroom, because it's a four-bedroom house.
Five bedrooms.
I think it's a six. Is it a six as designed?
The house is a four-bedroom house, and that's one, so you need at least a five-bedroom septic. It doesn't say how many...
The systems are six. It looks like it's kind of there.
But now I'm saying, do you have, from the Board of Health, something that says that the septic system is approved for what it is you plan on doing?
I don't have an approved plan with me now, but the plan's been approved. Yeah, I know. I understand, yeah, so we can...
I mean, you heard the last one.
I totally understand, yeah, I know, yeah.
Okay.
Also, do you have any things that shows setbacks from...
Yeah, right here. It says 32 from the property line.
Right here.
Is this a corner... Is this a corner lot, or no?
I can't tell, though. I can't...
Well, here, at least with this one, it's 32. It's clearly over 40 from the road, because it's behind the main house. And then it looks like it's 20... This wall here is 27 feet, so I think we're... I think the setbacks are fine, if I'm reading this right.
Okay, I just, yeah, having a hard time reading it.
Yeah, I mean, that, whatever that would be, the northeast corner looks like it would be the closest to any property line. I don't... I can't even tell where your property line is.
Yeah, I can't either.
I mean, the flag's here, right?
So, the accessory apartment is 22 feet from the side, the closest side property line. I don't have a front dimension, because the house exceeds the front setback, so that...
Yeah, it's way back.
Yeah, so it's 22 feet. I think the setback in this area is 20? I'm just looking at the plan on my phone.
Well, it's 25 from the setback from the front, but...
So the provider's... It shows 40 feet from the front of the dwelling to the septic field.
Right, so it's clearly...
I mean, the front setback far exceeds it. The side setback is the closest, which is 22 feet.
What is it? I mean, I see a thing that says 32.
32, yeah.
But I don't know where the 32 goes to. Is that...
Where are you?
Here.
I have it outdated, which I'm looking for. 32 feet, pardon me.
Okay, now what about the back line?
He's got plenty.
Is it... Where is it? Is that... Is the flags, is that the back line?
Yeah, the entire lot's not shown, because it's... Oh, it is shown there, okay. I'm looking at... I mean, just by the looks of it, that it's...
It goes down in the back, so is that...
It's a couple hundred feet, 150 feet plus to the back setback. So the closest setback is 30... The closest property line is 32 feet, and that's the side property.
Where does the property go to the east? All I see is a bunch of flags.
The property goes to the east.
I believe those are wetlands.
Where's the... I mean, where's the property?
Here's the east property line. No, here's the east property line, south property line.
This would be the west, isn't this?
Oh, pardon me.
This is west.
West property line, the east property line.
Oh, it's way over here?
Yep.
Yes. What's with the flags?
Wetlands.
Oh, wetlands, okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, because it goes all the way there.
It's a long ways, yeah.
You got plenty of the...
Plenty of setback, okay.
I actually saw him there when I went to visit, and he showed me all of it. There's way more than enough.
Okay.
And also, Maria's notes for us, granted, it's not a presented plan, which we will need, but Maria's notes for today said that Matt Amendo tells her, Maria, that the five-bedroom septic system has been approved, four bedrooms in the main house still being built, and one bedroom in the accessory apartment. So it's a matter of just physically...
Just physically getting it to...
Physically.
I knew I'd seen that somewhere. I didn't...
Well, I mean, then we have a couple of options. And again, we...
Could I ask you to approve on the condition that is approved by the Board of Health?
Well, I mean, if... Well, anyway, why don't we go through the rest of the A through J before we...
Sure, yeah.
Before we settle in on...
I mean, we're at aye. To detach a accessory apartment without an penalty integrity act to the neighborhood which is located, I don't think that it will. In order in cars of development, housing units, disabled individuals, zoning board may allow reasonable deviations without...
Well, no, I mean, go back to G.
G. The septic system must meet the requirements of Westport.
Well, any property that has been granted a special permit for detached accessory apartment shall not be further divided unless all zoning requirements can be met for this district to be located.
Absolutely.
So, what that's saying is...
This property is not further divisible by the way.
Because of the wetlands.
Yeah, it's just not... It's not possible.
Right, yes, okay. It's just one you may understand that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Plenty of wetlands get divided, and septic put on them. But, yeah. I think it's just a matter of are we comfortable with him saying that's okay with the...
Well, I think, I mean, there's two things we can do. And again, these are just... Now we're just, you know, this... I mean, we did this before with the one who had the site plan. We just said, you know, "Get us a site plan in a week," you know, that we would hold off on the approval, you know, on the distribution of the decision until we received it. Or we can continue this, and he comes in, "Here's your plan," and we approve it. I mean, that's... Those are the two options we have. I mean, assuming that, you know, everybody agrees that, you know, that there's no issues... I mean, assuming that, you know, everybody agrees that, you know, that there's no issues with the...
I guess the only other question is...
I would ask if you could approve it when...
I guess the only question is that, right now, these two aren't built, right? And the rules are that the property owner has to live in one of them. And we already know the son, who is not the property owner.
He is. It's a family company, Reposa Properties owns the property.
They actually own a lot of them, right?
Yeah, right, they own a lot of properties, yeah, so he's the satisfied owner of the company.
What we generally have done, and certainly recently, is we mandate a deed restriction that... For a couple of things. One, that in fact the owner will occupy the house. And two, that there will only be one bedroom in the accessory apartment. That way, if they were to sell it, then people coming in would know what the restrictions are, and...
Correct.
So, as long as... And again, can you speak to the...
Yes, I can. So I can... I ask you to approve it under the condition that, one, the Board of Health has approved the septic system, two, there'll be a deed restriction, that only the family will live on the property, and the third...
On one or the other.
On one or the other, and the third restriction was? There was a third... Just the two.
You have to... You can only have one bed...
And it won't be further subdivided, was I think was the third stipulation.
It's not the family, it's the owner.
Yeah.
I would like to be very clear about the first thing you said. Not that the Board of Health has approved it, that you submit a plan approved by the Board of Health.
Deliver it to zoning.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Okay, I want to be clear.
Sure, okay.
And we would put a deadline date on that, like a week from now.
I mean, is that something that's doable?
Yes, absolutely.
For the Board of Health.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you... Maria, your note said that they have approved it, so he's just waiting for a notification from them?
No, I think he's got it.
It's been approved, the house is on the construction right now.
I know, it's on the construction, that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know... That you have a, you know... Especially because of the accessory apartment. That, you know, that you have something from the Board of Health saying that the accessory apartment, that the total has been approved.
It's sized for the two of them.
Okay.
Is it likely that the septic system, as much as what we see here on this plan? Okay, so that they'll have it?
It's sized, it has the bedroom count on the plan.
It's D night too, because it says it, tracked it out, 36.
Where do you see all this?
Right up here.
Ah, okay.
It doesn't say it's approved, it's not stamped by the Board of Health with it.
Okay, are there any questions from the Board that we haven't constantly studied?
No.
No? I'll open it up to the audience. I guess you guys are here for something else, so... In which case, I make a request a motion to close the hearing?
I will make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Discussion. I see absolutely... This meets all the requirements of our special permit, so I don't see any issue with it. It's brand new, so Ralph is going to make sure it's built to the proper codes. Again, you know, I would add to the conditions that a health, a septic system approval from the Health Department be provided within two weeks? Because that would be prior to your sending out your decision.
It has to be, yeah, prior to the two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and our decision is contingent upon...
And our contingency.
It'll be here before that.
As well as a okay, a deed restriction, and Maria actually has forms for that, am I correct?
I do, and I will email that.
She has a form for the deed restriction, so that you provide a deed restriction for requiring that the homeowner reside in either the main house or the accessory apartment, that there only be one bedroom, and that the lot not be further subdivided unless it meets all the restrictions, the zoning requirements. And again, Maria has forms that you can just fill out.
I will email to Mr. Repose, because he has to sign it and notify us. Have him notify us and send it back to me.
Yes, right. Is there anything else that... Oh, and it'd be built according to the plan provided. And I should say, you know, and I hinted this, but we should, and I've seen there's some other to hedge on this, is that substantially, because if they make a minor modification, I don't... Do we really want to see a minor modification? No, so we would say that the accessory apartment would be built, you know, and then if there's words that go, you know, substantially, you know, in accordance with the plan provided.
And the testimony was given at the hearing.
So, anything else that anyone wants to add?
I'd just like maybe something on the record to show that the son who's going to live there is actually an officer of the LLC. I mean, he told me he owns it, but like...
Oh, you just want that part of the record?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Okay. If there's no one to comment, make a motion? Okay, I will. I'll read it off. Nobody else wants to do this? I will make a motion to grant the petition for an accessory apartment not to exceed 784 square feet as allowed by zoning by law, Article 9, Section 9.53. Actually, I'm not even going to say that an accessory apartment not as allowed by zoning by law, Article 9, Section 9.53, subject properties located at Zerel Wildberry Way, Westport, Mass., and is shown on SS map, Lot 35, Lots 12A, and with the conditions that we just described.
One second.
Is that... You second?
Second.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. There is a 20-day waiting period.
Do we give a date for what he has to give all this to at five?
I told him it's two weeks.
All right, and that we won't issue it formally until we get it, and therefore, it could be more than 20 days.
They won't get the formal decision until after he...
Yes, there's more than 20 days then, from today, yeah.
20 days from the decision with the town clerk.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, fixed your time, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is 67 Masquasatch Road to review and consider revised plans related to proposed plantings and fencing submitted by Municipal Communications LLC applicant Brian Giblin. Owner, subject property located at 67 Masquasatch... Boy, it took me a long time to figure out the city.
I can't say.
Westport. Is there someone here to represent? And again, we will go through the same process. This is a little different because it is not... This is not a hearing per se. This will generate a letter and not a formal decision, because it is in relation to a previous decision that was approved, and in that decision, there were two stipulations, that things like planting, I think there were G and H on the approval of either the planting of shrubs around the fence line and a shed, if there is one, on the property. So, name and address and...
Sure. Michael Dolan from the law firm of Brown Rudnick.
Vincent Grinise from Independent Contractor for Municipal Communications.
So, I'm here on behalf of Municipal Communications. As you know, they are seeking to install a wireless telecommunications facility at 67 Masquasatch Road. Pursuant to, as you alluded to earlier, Mr. Chairman, the litigation between Municipal and the town relating to the issuance of the approvals for the proposed facility. An agreement for judgment was executed between the parties on August 4th, 2022. Per the terms of the agreement for judgment, Municipal is required to come before the Board for its review and approval of a proposed plantings plan and a fencing plan, both of which are intended to aid screening the facility equipment compound. With respect to the plantings plan, as you can see on Sheet A6 of the plan submitted to the Board, Municipal is proposing to plant non-invasive, six-foot-high green giant arbividae spaced every six feet surrounding the fenced compound. This type of placata was selected because it is resistant to the local deer population.
Right, I see that it's a change from the original.
Correct, correct.
A letter saying that's going to be...
We got some feedback that that's not the right one.
Uja placata?
Yes.
Whatever the uja placata is.
Right.
Some kind of a tree.
This year, everything's off.
They've eaten all my arbividae.
They're eating everything this year.
This is one they don't like?
No, this year is special.
Forget about hostas, they're gone.
Everything is gone, I got the hostas, everything. So they may eat them if we have another dry year next year, but, you know.
So is this a different kind of arbividae than...
Is it the green giant?
Yeah, it's a type that I know the local nursery had recommended be used because it is reputed to be one that deer like less, so that's what we're...
It looks a little like marijuana plants.
You know, no licensing for that tonight.
Deer really like those, though.
Jerry, you clearly don't know where a marijuana plant is.
That's a good thing. And then with respect to the fencing plan, as you can see on Sheets A1 and A5, Municipal is proposing the installation of an eight-foot-high stockade wood fence surrounding the entire equipment compound. So, with those modifications to the plans, as I alluded to, we wanted to bring those to your attention and hopefully secure an approval from you, that those are satisfactory to you, and that was a condition before we proceed forward applying for a building permit.
Okay, actually, I don't see that we actually are responsible for the fencing plan, but because it just says that that the Board for its approval at a public meeting, a planting plan, including non-invasive plants consistent with local new England plantings, which is what we provided. But what about... Is there an H version of this, which is, are you planning on a shelter?
There is... So, the carrier that is the lead carrier in this tower is AT&amp;T. They are proposing a walk-in cabinet, which is...
Not a shed.
Not a shed. And, you know, quite frankly, between the arbividae and the fence, which are all opaque, you're not going to see anything in there, so... But, you know, that's something that AT&amp;T will address as they go to apply for a building permit as well.
So at this point, then, you can stipulate that you meet Section H of this because there is no shed or shelter to be located on the site?
Correct. I mean, the term shed or shelter might be subject to interpretation, but...
Yeah, I don't really think that we think of the console as a...
Yeah, this is a metal...
No freestanding unit outside of the tower itself.
Correct. This is just a metal and kind of enclosed cabinet, is that a fair description?
Yeah, where the radio equipment would sit in that, and, you know, it's large enough for a man to walk into and be inside of it, but it's not what you would picture as like a shelter at one of these cell sites.
Yeah, those big buildings that you'll see.
12-by-24 shelter or something, which is what we used to install, they don't do that anymore.
Okay, so you're going to, instead of a shelter, a shed, you're going to install, what are you going to call it, a cabinet?
It's called a walk-in cabinet.
Walk-in cabinets.
It doesn't have a formal roof on it, a peak or anything like that?
No, I believe it's a flat roof. The one that AT&amp;T is proposing.
I mean, to give you a sense, if you look at Sheet A4, it says AT&amp;T equipment, and you can see that it's, you know, it's the box that the equipment will be in. But it's not intended to have any more room than the equipment and a person to be able to walk in and adjust it.
It's a very industrial-looking, it's not like a new England shed or anything like that, is that correct?
This cabinet is not, no.
Yeah, okay.
But like you said, no one will see it, it'll be behind them.
Correct.
It's going to be behind a vagina.
It's in the trees, within the tree line.
So, I mean, if we were to do the... I would like to, because we, as a board, are on the hook for for both this G and H sub-paragraphs, that we address them both, and by addressing the second one, we just identify that in lieu of a shed or shelter, the petitioner proposes a walk-in cabinet, which is not subject to the design constraints of, you know, you know, for this paragraph.
Correct.
So at least we don't ignore it.
Exactly.
And I would like to make sure that we put something in the provision for maintaining the fence and the plantings.
I think that's in actually one of the other provisions.
I just want to make sure that's part of what we decide.
And Maria...
It wants a deer eat them all.
Yeah. What is going to happen on this is not, this is not going to be a decision letter, this is going to be a letter from the zoning board to the petitioner in regard to this, you know, these aspects of the original petition. So does anybody have any problem with the uja placata?
Not to be confused with...
No, she's already told me.
She's already told you. You're helping lunch.
No problems.
I don't have any problem with it.
And if they eat it, they'll only eat it up to about five feet.
That's right. That's right. The most important part will still be...
Although they ate my father, other than that, because there was snowpack, it was like several years ago.
Oh, it got up high enough.
Yeah, and it drifted, and so they could get another like three, two or three feet, and it's shocking.
They just wait for my stuff to like bloom, and then they...
We had no problem till like September, and then, like now, you're eating everything. I mean, it's like become, like everything is just sort of like, you know, you take a herb and you take off the things, it's just everything, all the leases are...
When I walk my dog in the morning, they don't even bother running away.
Has the deer population increased?
Oh, they have. We are, I was just reading, Bristol County has the highest incidence of deer accidents in the state.
And Westport's number one on that.
Well, that's, yes, and Westport is number one now, I mean, yes.
I was coming home.
When you drive home, be careful.
Be careful. Because I was going down my laneway last night, and a deer just was like...
Wow. And if you see one, there's at least two more.
That's right, that's right.
300 deer strikes, so far.
300?
They'll eat your dog next.
Excuse me?
They'll eat your dog next.
This is the worst time, right now.
Is it really?
Yes, yes. Okay, are there any other questions, comments?
No, there was something about the fuel for the generator, propane and all, but I believe that there's no issue with that.
The new plan is, it went back to gas, right?
No, the new plan actually says to be...
To be determined.
To be determined, yeah.
And it will go in front of the...
That's right.
The planning, the building inspector.
AT&amp;T hasn't decided the exact fuel source, things like that, so when they do and they move forward for a building permit, they'll have to attend any, you know, related approval for that.
And this is where I actually got the substance, because the, generally, when we approve a plan, we, a petition, we approve it with the plan submitted. But, I mean, obviously, these are complex plans, and I read, and our decision actually said substantially in accordance with, so if you adjust the type of fuel, then you need to get approval from the zoning enforcement officer, who would then determine if it is a substantial change to the plan.
Correct.
Any other comments?
The only good thing about the propane is if there is a hurricane, and they have to shut off the gas, the cell tower remains functional, which is important.
Yes. Well, once again, voting on this will be Jerry Cantaline, Catino, Barbara Punilow, I can't even pronounce my own name, Roger Minard, Constance Gay, and Ray Elias.
Want to pronounce my names, too?
That's the reason I'm not doing this. No, I can get Kazekowicz now, see, I have a lot of Polish, but... So, and again, a motion to approve would just be a motion to, for us to write a letter to the petitioner saying that we approve the planting and the use of, that the walk-in shed satisfies the condition of the settlement. So, without further ado, I will make a motion to approve the... So, without further ado, I will make a motion to approve the proposed planting plan as in accordance with sub-paragraph G of, and we can, Maria, figure out what sub-paragraph G or whatever it is, as well as identifying a walk-in cabinet in lieu of a shed or shelter that satisfies the condition H of the, again, of the filing.
I would like to amend that slightly.
Okay.
To add, and that the fencing and plantings will be maintained in perpetuity to, as to block the view of the equipment inside.
Is that an issue?
No, sir.
That's, okay, so noted. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no? Cricket show, which unanimous? When do you think, when do we start working on this?
Well, as soon as we receive your letter, then we're gonna, we'll file for the building permit.
Right, and I'm not even sure, I don't think there's a 20-day on this, this is just a letter to them.
The decision's been made.
Right.
Yeah, so we would file for the building permit, and then we'd take a look at the weather, you know, we'd love to get.
Oh, yes.
See if it's possible.
Right, right.
Yeah, but really, it shouldn't, we built them in the middle of winter and.
We don't usually get that until middle of, you know, until January-ish, January, February can get dicey and.
Right, it's really just a question of getting the foundation in, and then, you know, once that, once that's in, I mean, there'll be cleanup that'd be required in the spring, you know, kind of touch everything up, most likely if we were to finish it.
So when do you think we're gonna have cell service?
Well, I know AT&amp;T and now Verizon has also signed a lease for the tower, so I know they're both anxious to get going, of course, as Michael said, they'll have to pull their own building permits.
So, I mean, is that next year sometime?
It should be next year, yeah.
Okay.
They've already done drillings for core samples, you know.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And the approval was for flush mount antenna, correct?
Well, the.
I mean, that was a big deal.
Yeah, the agreement for judgment speaks to making it as low-profile as possible, understanding, though, that there are nine antennas that each carrier needs, so there are some towers that you'll see the antennas literally, it looks like they're stapled right to it, that can't happen here because there's nine antennas that need to be situated, but it will not be, I mean, it's gonna be as tight a bracket as they can do to get.
Not armed, sticking out.
No, no.
And we decided not to make it look like a tree.
That's right.
Right.
Pine tree stricking a hundred feet above everything else is, you might as well just make it look like an antenna.
Yep.
Okay, Gregor, thank you.
Hey, thank you all very much, and thank you.
Thank you for coming, we find it so.
Gregor was great to work with, thank you.
Well, I don't think you're.
Can we get a letter from him when you go to, get a letter from him when you go to the select board about it?
Yeah, right, okay.
Hi folks, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few more orders of business.
What can I ask of you?
What's she talking about? The first is, meeting minutes for October 26th. This is a fairly long one, I mean, you remember that meeting, the one that I wasn't at, and we won't talk about that, anyway.
October 28th you weren't at, you were at October 26th.
I was.
Yeah. That's the one you were at?
I was at COVID, anyway, October 26th, Sunday.
Okay, so you were at this one?
Yes.
Yes.
That was the meeting.
This was?
Yes. You weren't at the September.
Oh, I wasn't the one before, this is the one, I was at this one.
You weren't at the three-and-a-half-hour meeting.
I wasn't at the other one, right, yes, so, yes.
Equally as.
Equally as, anyway, that's.
Entertaining.
It's entertaining.
I was picking my words.
Yes, anyway, to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 26th, 2022. I'm entertaining the motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, okay, I'll sign this, okay. Couple of other orders of business, and then you get my order of business that we need to discuss, not a whole lot, oh, no, matter of fact, it's on my agenda. First of all, we had, Ray and I, actually, we were at the select board meeting this week to discuss Maria's reclassification. I think that went, I think that went. I think that went real well, they stopped me through half of what I, remember all the stuff that we winter, here's all the stuff that she does, he said.
That's all I got, that's all I got mine in there, Maria, that, they stopped him, I got mine.
We're gonna, we're gonna send this to the personnel board for, you know, for review, so we, you know, we got through that, and hopefully this will, this will result in Maria being reclassified as administrative assistant rather than, rather than a clerk, because that's really, that's really her job. The second is, at that same select board meeting, I briefed them on our petition, on our effort to adjust the petition fees, and they were fully in favor with that, they said, yep, they realize that, that all boards, especially the zoning board of appeals, is supposed to be a revenue-neutral board, so we charge a fee that is representative of what it costs, and they were fine with that, and they agreed that, you know, that once we provide a recommendation, they will then review it, and if they approve it, then that's it. There was one comment that they, that they thought we might consider, what do we call, low-income cases, can we do something to help low-income, and, but then that was, that was then changed to something that we should come up with our petition fees, if they want to then adjust it to say something else, then that's up to, that's up to the select, and I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Well, I thought about that too, but in reality, these fees are the smallest piece of the whole project.
I brought that up, I said, most of these things are costing people twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, we already charging three hundred, charging five hundred is not gonna break the bank.
No.
So.
You factor that into what a college is gonna finance the project.
And no other board does this, but.
Right.
And so they, anyway, that was, but that was the thought, but they are supportive of what we're doing, so I would like to have further discussion, I'd like to actually come to a culmination, if not this meeting, certainly soon, because I would, you know, I would like to get this in front of the, of the select board as soon as we can. It's not pressing, but, so we, you know, we can take time to do it right, but I think we need to, yes.
I just would like to say, as I said at the last meeting, I really think that we have to factor in the legal.
Yeah, I, you know. He has a bunch of things.
Actual legal.
Well, Jerry, I'll bring that up now.
You bring that up, well, let's talk about that when we get to it, because that's, we also had a, we discussed that Jerry and I were gonna attend a planning board meeting on potential zoning board bylaw changes to be requested at the next town meeting. Right now, the planning board is up to the eyeballs in what's happening on the Route Six corridor between bringing in water and sewage, how to rezone that, so it's really getting too late in the year to propose any, any other zoning changes. The one that really sticks out the most is, is our zoning for signs, our zoning for signs is really weak. We put something in last year, which was way overboard, we got, anyway, it was, it was, it went a little bit, it went way too far, we were looking, it encompassed what you can put in your private property as far as political signs and things like that, and everybody got upset about that, which is understandable.
Well, do when you're driving around town, you'd have a little sign to read.
Yes, but then there's, yes, but anyway, and then, yeah, how do you enforce all that kind of stuff? But certainly, signs in business districts as far as businesses is something that needs to be regulated, and it really isn't. The problem with that is that because of the Route Six corridor potential change, it's probably, we're looking at, at making a dividing line between businesses in that area versus visiting, businesses in the village.
Yeah.
And right now, there isn't any, we could put a slaughterhouse across the street, and that, you're in a business district, you can do that, so.
But that's not signage, that's.
No, but it would go along with.
We could get a McDonald's in here, and they could have the girl sign up.
So, so, in order to do this properly, they're working into breaking up the business district into zoning, say, business light industry in the village, and heavy industry on Route Six that allows for.
Lord of the South.
Bigger office buildings and, you know, other things, but that isn't something that's going, they're gonna be able to do anytime soon, because that's a big effort, that's a big effort, so, anyway, one story short, it doesn't, I don't think that we're going to propose any zoning changes for FY23 town meeting, because in order to do that, you really need to have it done by January, and you need to have public hearings, you need a bunch of things, and there's just not enough time to do that, so, anyway, that's, that's all they want to say about that.
And that's post that email we got from somebody saying that there was a meeting on Monday night to discuss the signs and something else?
I, you know.
I'm not, I was like, who is this?
Yes, that's from the.
That's the new planner.
That's from the new planner, and I saw it back saying, you know, you came up with a, you know, with a schedule that, I don't wanna, anyway.
Yeah.
And, and it's gonna be for nothing because we don't have enough time, if there was something we could do to impact it and actually get something done, I would be all for it, but I just, I mean, the last time we did this, we started in August?
Yeah.
We started in August, and we just barely made the time to get, to get zoning plans in, because you need to have enough public input, you know, in, you know, over a period of time to do this, so I don't see anything happen. I do want to talk about petition fees, the other thing, we were going to have a exec session this week, we are not, because of, again, laws related to how you do that, and so we are pushing it off until the December meeting. What I would like to do, if we have time, since the next one, we were going to do selection of officers, we haven't done that.
December 7th is, and then no more until after the holiday, correct?
That's correct.
I haven't.
And don't sign, don't assign any.
No.
Would it be reasonable to swap, we were going to have an executive session this one, and election of officers next one, and swap it and do election officers this time?
Tonight?
I don't see, I mean, the election of officers are really just a board thing, it's not really a public input.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any issue with that?
No.
Because we did, we should have done it in July and August, but there's, some of those things, we, you know, our meetings went too, I, I don't like to hold that kind of thing after we've already spent three, four hours here, I mean, it's, so does anybody have any issue with?
No.
Okay.
Especially where we're not doing executive session tonight.
Right, okay, so let's talk a little bit about.
And I'm already missing jeopardy, so.
The, where were you left off, let me get rid of half of these papers. Okay, all of this, okay, Maria, you can go too. What we had talked about, and I'll sign this one, is five hundred, okay, Ray, why don't you give us a little brief on what you found from the lawyer stuff?
I was at the town hall, checking mail here, and I spoke with the select, the board of selection, executive secretary, and when Jerry said, we should have that here, so the, our discussion here was, well, we don't, it's not mail to us, so we don't even know what it is, it's a, it's an annual budget for legal for the entire time. Well, she said, oh, no, since I've been on, she's only been on for a short time, she has separated it out, and the new town administrator wants it separated out.
Right.
They do have it that way, so I said, she said, do you want that, Ray? I said, yeah, well, we're discussing this at our meetings, and so she gave me 22's budget, which was 22 what we used, from July 1st to June 30th, that's the calendar year, that's the year the cell tower, right?
Yes.
We used, we used thirty thousand.
Yeah, I believe.
Twenty-two thousand of that was the cell tower.
Yeah.
So that left around eight thousand for the rest of the hearings that were left over, which the number was around eighteen, that's the number.
I'm surprised it wasn't more.
Yeah, I'm surprised that was only thirty thousand dollars.
Well, if we would have went to court, it would have definitely been more, I would think.
No, it would have been, it would have been a lot, but.
But that's, just with the rest of them, for, for an average, for 2022 was, our average, monthly average was twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, for the, for the eight thousand dollars that was left other than the cell tower, because that went to litigation, so that, that kind of got out of our hands at that point, there was eight thousand left, which is an average of four hundred and forty-four dollars for the rest of the applications.
Yeah.
Now, based on that, that doesn't even cover the cost of building, but I don't know if we can actually do that, but just so you know, 2023, from July 1st to September 30th, there's only three months, we've already used thirty-seven hundred and forty-one dollars, which, if you multiply that out, that's twelve hundred and forty-seven on a monthly basis for fifteen grand for the, for the annual budget for us.
So, in actuality, I don't think that's, you said, oh, what do we do, I said, we had Robin here a lot because of the cell tower, and that really shouldn't have, that should have been against the town's budget, not our budget, because it was out of our hands by then.
True.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's why, that's why I said it that way.
But there are other things, and I know that.
And, and here's the other thing, when, when we have one sitting here, because he needs to be here, or she, do we request that first?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they don't come just, oh, no.
So, so every time we use legal, it has to be requested first?
It absolutely does, I call up Jeff Blake, who is, who's my, and I say, Jeff, we have somebody here who's gonna come in with a lawyer, and they're gonna spout court cases.
No, 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 do we go through Harnett before?
No, 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 I, I call.
We don't have to do that.
I don't do that, I may have to, but I don't.
I think, yeah, I think that's what we're supposed to be doing throughout the town, but.
The, when, when I feel as chair that we need, we need assistance from a lawyer because the petitioner's gonna have a lawyer, or there is a, a legal precedent here that we're not sure of, zoning, you know, a difference between a variance, I mean, you know, there have been a couple of issues that we just said, we need to get this right, and I need a legal, and sometimes it's just an email, and once or twice, we've had, we've had Jeff here, but normally, it's, it's an email, still, like you said, every time, every time we ask Leo Council to do something, it's, you know, they're gonna charge, and, you know, that's, that's.
I just, I was under the impression that you had to request for that.
I don't think so, because he wouldn't show up, so if you weren't allowed to request him to show up.
Right.
He wouldn't show up.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Right, and therefore, I think it's either, here, what, I can't remember, Jeff Blake, either Jeff may go into Harnett and say, hey, I'm going to the thing, is that okay? And he probably always says yes, right? But, you know, if I get, I get this all the time, like somebody will ask me a question, and I go, but you're not our client, like, you know, it's like a, you know, we represent the company, and one of the employees asks us a question, I said, I can't answer that, right?
Right, right.
So I think if, by the fact that he does show up, when you.
Yeah, he only shows up when he's requested, yes. He only answers email when requested, you know, so that's, so, yes, what, I really hesitate to bump up the average cost per the normal guy coming in, because normally, we don't use them for, I mean, there are special cases that, that, that we don't know the answer for, and we request help, but for the average Joe coming in for an accessory apartment, we never ask for help on those, so, so I hesitate to, I think five hundred dollars that we're thinking of, I think is, covers the cost that, now, on the other hand, things like, and I can think of now three, actually, and I had this written down before, obviously, the cell tower one, forty Bs, and another one I looked at was special permit for adult entertainment, now, we haven't had one of those, but if we were to have one in the future, especially if they improve Route Six, that, I gotta believe is gonna be more than one or two hearings.
We have had.
You had, have one a long time ago, so I think that's in the same realm of a cell tower, where it's gonna require a lot of public input, you guys agree with that, that that's, that's not a one or two hearing kind of meeting, if somebody wants to put in an adult entertainment, something or other, that it's gonna have a lot of public input and a lot of public discussion, so I would, and, and that's a business, so charging them the, a different rate other than five hundred dollars, I think is not only fair and reasonable, but economically justifiable, and I would like to add on it, to each of those, not only, you know, I can see, like I said, fifteen hundred dollars, because that's assuming it takes five or six hearings, take Maria's time, take whatever, and it turns out to be that kind. be that kind of number. Adding on another 1,000 dollars, because in all those cases, we are probably going to have, require legal support, not, may ask for it sometime, but each of those, I believe, were going to require legal support. I would have no problem with making it 2,500 instead of 1,500. And I think that's light.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody's.
Yeah, and, and the ones that become contentious like that, in, from a business standpoint, like Gifford Road, when it was Marshall Otting, that went two or three times with determining.
Yeah, but that's residential, so that's, that, that would still come in.
So, there's two types of businesses, right? So, there is the cell tower, the adult, the adult entertainment, perhaps, say, another grow facility or things of that nature. But then there's like, we had Cape Way Roofing, right, which is a business. Do we be charging them?
No, because that's, that's residential area, and, and it just, and it just came in as a finding.
Mm-hmm. But it's not just an area, but it's still, it's still, but like, what about these guys here tonight? That they're a business. They were representing, right, even though they were registered, right? So, it's supposed to be in the commercial district.
It's not, it's not in the commercial district.
Okay.
And not only that, but it's not really a commercial activity. It was, and, and they were not requesting, they were not requesting.
How we're going to delineate that.
It wasn't hearing.
Yeah.
Right, right. So, anyway, so, but.
I'm talking about the cell tower. I'm talking about the.
But I mean, I'm looking at the types of permits that we do.
Yeah.
And by, by permit type.
In the difference.
The three that stick out to me, when I went through 26 of them, were these three that I think are above and beyond the 500 dollar nominal. We have a hearing or two or three, and we're done with it. I think these stick out as obviously much more than a couple of hearings.
I thought that we had discussed the fact that these wouldn't be included in the 500 or whatever we come up with, but we wouldn't be determining those fees at this point, because those are somewhat individualized, and probably took a little more study on.
Well, I mean, I don't know that we need to.
How would we know ahead of time to say?
All these are, let's face it, these are estimates. And at least trying to get something that's reasonable.
Yeah.
And I think 500 dollars per, and if you, and I know we discussed last time, that if somebody wants to do a bunch of continuations for, that, that maybe we charge them an extra 100 dollars after, whatever, that, that there be some other fee for multiple.
If you walk out before it's your turn.
You know, you know, I mean, again, that's, that's a possibility that, that I'm certainly willing to, you know, that I, that I can justify, because it's a cost.
Yeah.
There is an absolute cost that, that we incur, and we're supposed to be revenue neutral.
But those exceptions can be put on discussion later down the line. We shouldn't hold up decisions for the 500 or whatever we decide.
I think we should do it all, because else we're, else, like, else we're constantly raising our fees, right? I think we need to make a package, publish it.
Yes.
And that's it. Not like, publish it next month, and then two months later, add to it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, but I, I don't think this is a cast in concrete, because what we do here is we say, here's what, first of all, like I said, I think the nominal ones, we have good numbers for. We have good rationale. I can support that with numbers. I can support the cell tower with numbers. We did a 40B a long time ago, and certainly that is easily supported.
Well, there's different 40Bs too.
Different.
40Bs, some of them are not too complicated.
Yes, right.
But some of them will go for two years.
Right.
And we always have the purview to charge them back, right? Because if we need a consultant.
Excuse me?
We have, we have the ability.
We have the ability to acquire a consultant.
That comes up rarely in the hearing, though.
Excuse me?
That, that usually comes up rarely in the hearing.
Yes, we would, we would say, and, and that is in the application for, you know, there is, there is part of the bylaw that says, you know, if we, if we need a consultant, that's not the legal fees, that's a consultant, then.
Can the consultant be an attorney?
Probably not. Our town, I don't know, I don't know.
What's the question?
Can, can, can legal fees get pushed on the umbrella of consultant fees?
Can the consultant, can an attorney be a consultant?
I believe it can be over time. But along that line, on 40Bs, there have been times when we get to a point where we're running out of money, and we have the proponent give us additional authorization for, for legal fees. So, it's not like always just one fee.
Oh, no, right. And it even says that in the bylaw. It says, you know, we will come up with a fee, but if it exceeds that, we're going to come back and, you know, you're going to pay whatever it costs.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, you know, I would be ready to go to the, the select board and say, you know, that the fee should be 500 dollars for these kinds of fees. And I think 2,500 dollars for the other three areas that I talked about is reasonable, knowing that each of those is going to require legal support.
Call, call the other ones initial fee.
And, you know, but there also could be consulting fees along with that as well.
Or just have anything that's in the commercial district, that's 2,500 bucks.
Well, now, I, because we don't do things by district. We do things by type of, of, of.
Oh, what the?
A permit. So, it's by, it's by type of permit, not by where you are.
Now, when you presented this the last time, you were talking 500, and we weren't talking about legal fees at that point.
Right.
Now, we've just come up with the fact that some substantial legal fees.
Right.
I, you know that I like to keep fees down.
Yes.
But by the same token, if we really are going to do it based on real costs, I'd like to see us at least consider some amount of money, 50 bucks, I don't care, to our legal fees, so that if we go to the town, and we say we need a lawyer for such and such, well, you can't have it. Well, we built that into our fee already.
Well, he might have that built in the 500. That's what you're saying, right?
No, he didn't.
No.
Well, you know what? I, I kind of agree with you. I wasn't agreeing with this higher number in the beginning, just like you, okay? But I, when I, this is eye-opening right here. This is, this is like, wow. We're not supposed to be making any money, but we're not supposed to be in a deficit either.
Right. I, I really hesitate to go a lot higher than 500.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I know. But again, even this is an estimate.
Yeah.
It is, here's what we think our budget is, based on here's how many petitions we think we're going to get. Well, if we get more or less petitions, that number goes up and down. So, it's, it's not an absolute science.
No, right. And you already added 40 bucks in for legal fees on that, right?
Right, okay. I already added 40 bucks in for legal fees. That's like six minutes.
Probably not even. Yeah, I mean, I don't, that's why I think we, I think, one thing, I mean, we know, we really should know what the lawyers cost us per hour. Because that's the only way we could figure this out. And I think I remember when we were at a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and you know how Shonda keeps everybody moving?
Moving because you're on the clock, yes.
Because of the clock. And she said something like, something ridiculous, like 200 something dollars an hour, which is, like, it's, that's cheap.
That's cheap, that's cheap.
Yeah. So, I think we should just find out.
But, but still, it's, I don't know what that's going to tell us. I, I mean, it's.
If they're 1,000 dollars an hour, and we need them here for 15 minutes, then we obviously need a lot more than 40 dollars into the, into the slush fund for attorney fees.
But like I said, I mean, for the, for the normal variance, administrative appeal, finding.
Right.
Those, we generally don't need anybody.
Yeah, like the Wildberry, it would mean.
This guy, I don't need anybody. So, why should I charge him for a lawyer?
Yeah.
So, for those kind of things.
I think it evens out.
I'm still comfortable with 500 dollars.
I mean, I am too.
And I'm just going to guess that an extra 1,000 dollars, which is probably way low, but at least it, it's going to.
Yeah, but not everyone is going to need an attorney, and like, the Wildberry one didn't, probably wasn't even at the 500 dollar mark.
Right.
Right? So.
It's an average.
It's going to average out. So, somebody's, yeah, but we need to make it fair.
Right, right. So, I would be really comfortable with, again, all the administrative appeals, the variances, the findings, the special permit, and, and all those three as 500 dollars. Now, if you want to add on another cost, if it goes over.
I think, over two, right?
Over two, I'm, I'm good with that, because we can support that. All other special permits would be 500. All these other ones that are like fishing game, and golf course, and, you know, and, you know, all those, I, I look at those as similar to a variance or finding or whatever, that it's going to be 500 dollars roughly. The others, I'm really comfortable with saying is 2,500. By the way, if you look at other towns, it's pretty consistent with what other towns do. I mean, they're not at 5,000 dollars, and they're not at 200 dollars, you know, for those kind of things. They're in that, so we're, we're consistent with, and that is also one of the things that Select Board asked for, you know, where do we stand?
And we could probably get a quarterly, this was, the fees that she said come from legal, that was a quarterly number. So, we could probably request that Maria gets a quarterly number, or a monthly number.
And then what we can do on a yearly basis, we can review this.
Right.
I'd like Maria to get the copies of the bills.
We review this on a yearly basis and say, okay, how are we doing on this?
Well, even if it, even if it came something to what I just said here, at least.
But at least now.
We don't know what it is, right? So, if we get the bills, we can know what matter it was associated with. So, we know that, you know, you know, who knows? Maybe when you ask them the emails, and you're asking Jeff Blake, maybe he charges a lot for that stuff, but when he comes to a meeting, they have a different rate.
That's possible, yeah.
Oh, I think she said that they were, they were board-specific, in other words. She gets a bill for the zoning board.
Yeah.
So, anyway, how does anybody feel about, about that, about that rate structure? 500 for the normal and 2,500 for the, for the ones that we know are going to take long? Because that will include at least some legal support.
Yes.
And I don't want to make it fine, because, and what we will do then, is on a yearly basis, we can review this and say, boy, we really underestimated this, and it really needs to be something else. Because now we have experience with it, and, and we need to adjust it. And even one of these other ones, that, you know, that 26 other kinds of permits that we almost never get, when we get one in, and we find, oh my God, these are a lot more difficult. Then the next time we review this, we'll just say, well, that one is going to be a, a special case.
Well, Roger, Roger looked at a lot of communities, and I, we both looked at them, and there is the low end of 200 dollars.
About 250.
There's the high end.
A thousand, 1,200?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But some of the, like, New Bedford was 400 dollars. You would assume that they would be higher than that. And I said, they probably haven't adjusted their fees, and they're probably ready, ready to now. If we looked at this next year in area towns, and, wow, they're all double what they were the last time.
Do you still have those written numbers? Because the Selectmen did ask for us to present those to them.
Well, they asked if we had them, and I said, yes, I've looked at all of the recent committees, and, and I can, I can pull them up. I do have them.
I thought they did ask.
And I wouldn't compare us to New Bedford.
No, I looked at.
Well, I'm just saying, when I looked at it, I goes, wow, just.
So, does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
What about, do we, do we really want to charge for something?
Continuance?
For continuance beyond.
Beyond the first.
Beyond the first continuance? I, I mean, I'm open to it.
I think if, if we continue because we have to do a site visit, I don't think that ought to be 100 dollars. I really don't.
No, 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 because that's something, no, I think that anything we request.
Right, and I think if we do it that way, then I think we're okay doing that.
If we, if we say, we need to continue it for us.
That's different.
That's different. If they say, I don't have the documents, I'll get it to you next.
Like, like we just.
Like this.
Right, yeah. And I think, yeah, I think that would have, you know, I mean, because they still have, I mean, she still had two weeks, or three weeks since the last time she spoke with us. And then she's doing it yesterday, and she expects everybody to jump?
Right, right.
The fact that she got the kid out there to look at the thing was pretty amazing in itself.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, and we could say, you know, if continuance is, you know, upon, based upon the petitioner's.
Request.
The delay, request, yeah. Maybe charge that, right? And we can just, we can just do a may, right? It's going to be a shall, it could be a may.
And then we can decide at the meeting, you're doing this, so you're, if you want to do this, it's 100 bucks.
Yeah.
You know, maybe, and we'll, we'll put it at 100 dollars.
Yeah.
Any continuance after the first, because people come in the first time.
And they're like, shell shocked.
No. But if they don't get it by the second time.
Right.
Then, then they ought to be charged, because, and, and I think that's fair, because a lot of times, and like in this case, generally, we'll have two petitions on, on a night. Even if both of them get continued.
Yeah.
If they both get approved or, or rejected the next time, then we average one per month, which is not any more time on Maria than we've been normally.
And it's also different. Let's say if, I mean, I think this has happened, right? So, you come in the first time, they don't have what they need, and they continue, and they have some unrealistic expectations that they could get it done in a month. But then they come back and realize that was unrealistic, and they just come in to do another continuance. I don't think, then, then we're not, we're not doing anything, right? I think then we could just let them keep rolling it, right? Because it's.
Well, what we have to look at is we say, okay, what's it costing us?
Yeah.
I mean, it costs us Maria's time to do meeting minutes and that. Now, if we're already doing meeting minutes for something else, but, again, we, I agree, that's not a bad idea. We can just say that, and we can just say it blanket, that continuances may, may require, may require an additional expense of 100 dollars per continuance. And we would just leave it like that. And I think that's, you know, at the discretion of the board. How's that?
Yeah, and that could be, would use that as the soft, with the, the Selectmen saying, well, people who are low income, we won't charge them.
We won't charge them, right, yes, yes.
We're just helping them along.
If it's just a little job, even although, yeah.
Yeah, because typically.
I don't even think we ought to bring that up. I mean, that should be the Board of Selectmen decided, hey, we're going to waive this fee.
I don't think that should be in there either.
No, I, I don't think it should be in there. The next thing you know, everybody will be saying, well, you know, I don't make enough money for this.
So.
And how much is your project?
Right, I mean.
I'll also mention to you that in the past.
How are we going to determine?
We have had requests from nonprofits.
Correct.
For waiver of the fees. And even the town itself, we don't, we don't have authority to waive the fees. So, I think we should stay away from it.
Well, they brought it up. The Selectmen said that they thought it should be in their hands, so.
Well, yeah, but they were talking about the low-income people.
Yeah.
Not about nonprofits, and not about the town.
But.
Yeah, but again.
I don't think we ought to be involved in that.
Nope.
I don't either.
I don't either.
We don't have the truck, the structure for, for writing down, okay, what is your annual salary, all that.
So, here's the words I'm thinking of. Continuances may be subject to 100 dollar fee per continuance at the discretion of the board. Very straight, I mean.
Yeah, petitioner-driven.
Excuse me?
Petitioner-driven continuances, not us. Like, if we say we had to continue, we're not going to charge them. So, it's.
Petitioner-driven continuance.
Yes.
At the request of the, the, the request of the petitioner.
Right. In that case, when do we have that discussion as a board? Do we do it in front of, like, the person sitting there tonight? Okay, do we want to take a vote, who wants to charge them extra 100 dollars? Or how do, how do we manage that?
Yeah, that's a little awkward.
Yes.
That's why I want to bring it up before we actually.
Now, that's a, that's a good, that's a good point. And, and it would have to be done, Ben. We would have to say, okay, you know, in this case, should we charge them a fee or not?
I think it should just be.
I think it will do it all the time, but. I think we'll do it all the time, but I think the may is just...
I think we ought to just go by general policy.
I do too. I think it's just good policy. I mean, no pussyfooting around about it. I mean, exactly, what are you gonna do, like, I don't know, you know?
Okay, so I'm not, what do you mean, general policy?
But it should be shall, but not may.
Right, shall. In other words, after, after a second continuance.
I don't think it's a good idea to vote to charge them 100 dollars.
Okay.
Well, that's it. When are we gonna do it? I don't think so. You do, you know...
We're voting that now. We're voting for that now. Yes or no, now.
Right.
So instead, we just say the continuances shall be subject to 100 dollar fee per continuance.
You get one after the first.
After the...
After the first.
Yeah.
After...
And I think we should just make it clear too, like, so when we're continuing the first time...
And that could be explained during the fee schedule when they come in to see Maria, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think also...
Well, actually, what we would do is, actually, what we would do is, is we'll update the website, because the website that says, here's your fee, this is the, once this gets approved, then we update the website with that fee, and it would be on there, here's...
But I think when we're having our first meeting with them, and they, it would clearly go into a continuance, I think we should make it clear to them that this continuance is for us.
Right.
And if you don't finish this the next meeting, you're gonna get charged.
Right.
It's just courtesy to them, because I think then they won't say, I can do this in two weeks. They'll say, no, I really need...
Yeah, 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 and I was away on vacation.
And I got COVID, and I, you know, I couldn't get, you know, somebody didn't answer my phone call, yeah. Like the one time it was like, oh, we can get, we can get a surveyor out in two weeks. I'm like, good luck with that! Because it's not gonna happen, you know?
Where do, where do the onsite fit in this?
That's not a petitioner requested.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm wondering here, because the latest wording you just did, I thought, took away the petition.
No.
Nope, nope, I'm gonna say, it's continuances shall be, it's actually, I'm just gonna say...
You don't go to the onsites, right?
Petitioner requested continuances shall be subject to 100 dollar fee per continuance, period.
After the first.
After the first, after the first. After the, after the first continuance.
Okay, well, let me just throw this in. So if somebody comes in here, they don't have all this stuff, we, we say, well, you gotta go out now and have a continuance. We allow them to have a continuance, and this is what we want you to bring in. The next time they come, they don't bring it in. Now, they're not gonna request a continuance, and are we, are we gonna start getting tighter on it?
Well, at that point then, no, we, we vote on it at that, if you're not gonna do a continuance, we vote on what you've got now, and that may mean, that may mean you get rejected because you don't have all the right stuff.
Right, so then they're gonna start over with a 500.
With a 500. Okay?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm concerned about petitioner driven. I guess you consider that petitioner driven in the sense that they didn't provide what they were supposed to.
And I think allowing them, allowing them that one grace period, and it's, and it's up to us in the first one to say, here's all the stuff you need for the next time.
If you don't bring it to us all.
And we can't do this piecemeal, saying, well, now that you got us this, now you need to get us this. We need to be specific when we, when we say we're gonna have a continuance that if you provide all this information, then as far as we're concerned, you're, you know, you have, now, if you request another one, then it's because you did...
Yeah, and I think, or if we request a continuance because we need to go talk to legal counsel, we asked, we asked, they're always gonna be requesting it, right, the petitioners, but it's something that we...
It's not our benefit.
It's for our benefit, then they don't pay for it. It's for their benefit, they pay for it, right? So, right? I think the September 28th was like that too. I think for whatever reason, you decided to close the meeting but continue, but I don't think that was petitioner driven. I don't know, I wasn't there, so...
Right, it wasn't.
No, I didn't, nor would I spend the time watching the film.
Okay, do we wanna wrap this up then?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So here, I make a motion to adjust, to request the Select Board adjust the, the Zoning Board of Appeals petition fees as per the following. All administrative appeals, 500 dollars. All variances, 500 dollars. All findings, 500 dollars. I'm gonna say somewhere in there that all, all of these, let me see, let me, okay, now I have to, there's a whole bunch of special permits, so I'm gonna break out the special permit for cell tower, separate, the special permit for 40B separate, and the special permit for adult entertainment separate. But all other special permits will be 500 dollars, and of all of those, they, all petitioner requested continuances shall be subject to 100 dollar per continuance after the first continuance. Regarding the special permit for the cell tower, it will be 2,500 dollars. Special permit for the adult entertainment will be 2,500 dollars, and the special permit for the 40B will be 2,500 dollars.
Yeah, I'd like to say something about 40B. It's been so long, I don't remember the detail, however, remember, the reason we're doing 40Bs is the law states that for affordable housing, we are, we are the planning board.
It's not, it's not in our zoning laws.
Only it would be the planning board. It would be ours. So my recollection is that we charged the previous ones where there were actual construction of apartments or, or houses for sale. We charged the fee that the planning board would have charged, whatever it is at the time, so that, I just wanna give you that insight. So it wasn't a flat fee. Now, we could look back on the records, we could look to see what we're allowed to do or what's the actuality.
Really?
But I think that is controlled by the state housing people that set up 40B. But again, I don't remember the detail, but I think we ended up charging the fee, because they do it differently. They'll do it by so many lots or so many apartments or whatever.
Yeah, so we don't do that.
I have a point of clarification. I'm just like, okay, so what you're saying, are you saying that if somebody comes in and they ask for a finding and a variance, that they pay? They pay twice, or they just pay?
No, one permit, it's per permit. It's per application.
Okay, okay, because I was a little, the way that you're reading them out, 500, 500, that was like, so does that mean...
Oh, okay, right.
They only pay once, right? On one application?
Yeah, right.
So it should be the greater...
I'll have to adjust the wording to say that, that a petition that includes, because, because somebody could come in and say, I need a, I need a special permanent variance, and that's still just one fee.
Okay.
So I'll clarify that to, that's a good point, because we get a lot of that.
They go hand in hand sometimes.
Yes, yeah, you can't have one without the other.
Yeah.
So I made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No? Good. Hopefully, we're not so much in the red. I mean, actually, we've only done a couple thousand dollars off the past few years, but, but that's...
Things are getting more expensive.
Okay, last order of business is election of officers. We should have done this, like you said.
I nominate Roger for chair.
Well, push this off with, start off with Secretary. Barbara's been doing it for, since we started this. And again, and I've always said, well, my intention is Maria will always be here. Now, there was one time in the past, what, four years, I think, that Maria hasn't been here and Barbara has filled in, and in that case, the most important thing, and Maria, correct me if I'm wrong, is, and I've told her this, is that you need to really identify who made the motion and who made the second, because sometimes it's not obvious on the video. Sometimes you really, really gotta pay attention to who said what, and so, you know, who voted on what, who made the motions, who made the whatever, is, is important for the Secretary to to jot down. The rest Val takes care of with the, with the video, so it...
I'll nominate Barbara as our secretary.
Does anybody else, would anybody else like to do that position?
She's doing a great job.
I have a nomination.
This is one being an alternate is a really good thing.
First of all, will you accept the position? All in favor?
Aye.
You feeling good today, Maria? I mean, everything's good?
Well, depends on what happens.
So I'm willing.
Okay, second is Vice Chair. Jerry's been doing this since the dawn of time.
God bless him.
And before, does anybody else actually think that they would, and his job primarily is, well, he works with the Chair on many things, but if the Chair isn't here, then he takes over the Chair's job, which he has done. An outstanding job, Jerry.
Which I don't like.
Did you do a good job at it?
You do an excellent job.
You did a good job.
I'll nominate Jerry as a vice chair.
Second.
Jerry, will you accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair, I've been doing this for a few years. I'm more than happy to give it to anybody else.
No, no, no laughing, can't see it.
I'm not sure that anybody else is as competent and knowledgeable about all of this as you are.
I agree with that.
I would like to make a motion that Roger Menard continues as our chairman.
I'll second that.
Would you accept?
That, before I accept, I have something I need to get off my chest. For the past several years, this has been a really good group of people. It has been a good divert, and, and you look around, we all have a different way of looking at things, and I think that's important. I mean, you know, you wouldn't want seven to meet, because I think of things in a logical, I'm an engineer. I think of step one, step two. You think a little bit more emotionally, you think more legally, you think more from a, you know, every, Jerry just thinks of like everything that's ever happened in history. And Barbara just is like a nice, it's just, I don't wanna say John Q. Emerson, but it, it rounds out the board with, with a very conscientious look at what's going on. We all have our own way of looking at things. We all vote differently, and that's the way it's supposed to be. What, what's hap, and...
And you guys are all still talking to Ray.
And for years, we've acted as a team. We supported each other, we've had each other's backs. Recently, that hasn't been the case. We haven't been acting as a team, and on team, I mean, talking about seven members, not six, and that bothers me. When we don't abide by the rules and, and it gets us in trouble, that, that bothers me. There has, people have said, members have said things to me that really bother me. One, somebody came up to me and said, boy, you really won that one. And that actually hurt. That, that really hurt me. We don't win. If I vote for something and everybody votes against it, I don't think that's, matter of fact, that happened in a case a year or so ago. It was, I voted to deny and everybody else voted to grant. I was happy with, I was fine with that. In fact, I congratulated the, the people and, and hoped they had a good time, because I don't consider that I lost anything, nor do I consider that, that one, that, that if everybody agrees with, with the way I voted, that I won. We don't win, we don't lose. Petitioner wins and loses, and if we do our job, the town always wins, because that's what we're here for. And to have somebody say, to imply that I was pushing something because I wanted to win, just, just really, I, it just really bothers me. Somebody else suggested that I, and, and maybe I do, maybe I'm, I'm a little bit strong arm at times, but I tend to, I, I tend to be a little more vocal, a little more outgoing, but I don't, and I, at least I don't try to say that I'm trying to, you know, convince, you know, to force you to vote my way. I'm trying to identify my position. I respect every one of your positions, and I respect every one of your votes, and I expect all of you to do the same. That you, whether you agree with me or not, you need to respect my decision. It's not one vote that counts. We have five people voting. The good thing about democracy is that it's the majority that wins. It's not the individual, so I think that's really important. Now, a lot of these meetings, today, was today a stressful meeting? Not particularly, was it? We have meetings that are stressful, right?
Yep.
I mean, have you gone home and been stressed out? Right?
I can call someone. I usually go home yelling, my God, I'm fired!
I mean, lately, I have been very, very, and as Chairman, and Maria contested this, there's a lot of other things that I have to do as Chairman that is a lot more stressful than, you know, than the rest of you, and my stress recently has been way up here. Probably because I take this very seriously. We do a very, very important job for the, for the town, and I, and, and I take what we do seriously, and sometimes I go home and I ponder over it. Did, you know, did I really do the right thing? Did I miss something? Did I do something, and I'll even watch the video again and say, you know, did, you know, was there something that I can learn from to make better? So because probably I take this serious, my stress goes up when we don't act as a team, and what I'm saying is, I will accept, and I was gonna say, no, I don't want it anymore, but I don't wanna leave, I mean, you know, I like all you guys, you, you know, it's, it's been a really good team and I've enjoyed working, so I will accept the Chair if you still want me after this little diatribe. But my tenure is up next July. If things do not improve to the point where we are back to being a cohesive team, I will not reapply next July, so you will have to find a new Chair.
Jerry.
So, given that...
Can I just ask you something? Because up until this whole Cadman's Neck issue, I never picked up on stress and divide and anything like that. Is this something
It's been, it's just been the past few months.
Before that, because we all know what that did?
Yes.
Okay, so it's more that situation and not the last...
But there was a few things leading up to that event, I think.
What's that?
I think there was a few things leading up to that.
There were some things leading up to that. There were some...
Are we still on the mic? Is this, is this okay? Okay.
Because we were gonna have executive session, but it, we seem to be kind of talking about things now.
Well, I, and I don't wanna talk about that. And by the way, it may not even be an executive session next, because we may do it in an open session, but that's, that's next, that's next time.
So that was my question, it was more recent events.
The stress isn't worth it, and if it continues, if we don't get back to the point where we all are acting, where we all agree to follow the rules, where we all can support each other, then, 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 I don't, then after July, I can't continue. So now that you've heard my diatribe, you can say whether you really want me.
I want you.
I would like to nominate Roger for the Chair for another year.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Will you accept the nomination?
I will.
Yeah, you, you get several people who made motions and seconded us, so... Somebody had done it earlier.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will accept the nomination until next July. Thank you. Anything else anybody wants to talk about?
No, that's more than enough.
Next week, is that, is that a heavy week next week?
No, it's December 7.
No, we only have one thing on so far.
Okay.
So that'll be a good day.
Holland Road is next, next week?
Sorry?
Holland Road, is that, is the 7, no, December 7.
No, that's the 7.
There's the media, the 7.
Isn't it the next meeting, the 7?
Yeah.
That's the Sean Leach one, I think.
You wanna, are you gonna draft up the letter to the, the people? Draft it, let me take a look at it.
Okay, I might as well not come.
No, 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 you have to show what I think.
It should be just really straightforward. We're just, you know...
Because there's other stuff.
Identify the paragraphs, just say, we reviewed those and the time accepted.
I'm not sure if there's just one, but I think there's other stuff. There's something else that...
Okay, now, oh, no.
I don't think so.
I would like to make a, make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.